Who are we missing? A few more bodies. Come on in, folks. Good evening, folks. I'd like to call to order this meeting this evening and give notice of a public hearing for today, June the 23rd, held here at Callwood City Hall at 6:30. The purpose of the public hearing is to hear public comments on bylaw number 1537 cited as Callwood Land Use Bylaw Number 151, 1989, Amendment Number 137, northeast corner of Seafield and Heatherbell Roads, bylaw number 1537, 2014. The purpose of the bylaw, number 1537, proposes to rezone the property more particularly, described as Lot B, Section 35, Esquimalt District Plan 7004, northeast corner of Seafield and Heatherbell Roads, from the agricultural 2, AG2 Zone, to the residential 6, R6 Zone, for the purpose of facilitating a subdivision creating up to 35 single-family residential lots. Looking for approval of our agenda?
Second.
All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. Public hearing statement is as follows, folks. This public hearing is convened pursuant to Section 890 of the Local Government Act to allow the public to make the representations to council respecting matters contained in the following proposed bylaw. Callwood Land Use Bylaw Number 151, 1989, Amendment Number 137, for the northeast corner of Seafield and Heatherbell Roads, bylaw number 1537, 2014. Every one of you present who believes that your interest in the property is affected by the proposed bylaw shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard or to present written submissions respecting matters contained in the proposed bylaw. None of you will be discouraged or prevented from making your views known, however, it is important that you restrict your remarks and comments to matters contained in the proposed bylaw. When speaking, please commence your remarks by clearly stating your name and address. The function of council at this time is, at the public hearing, is to listen rather than debate the merits of the proposed bylaw. After the public hearing has concluded, council may, without further notice, give whatever effect council believes proper to the representations made at this hearing. And as a matter of information, the bylaw is on our agenda this evening. For consideration, please be reminded that there will be no opportunity to speak to the bylaw during council at that time. The opportunity is now, folks. So with that, I will open up the public hearing and invite you to the microphone. And... I can't see the red light. Is it on, Pat? On the mic? Now I can see the red light. So you're on, folks.
Mayor, council, and staff, thank you for having us tonight. My name is Russ Trace. I live in the adjacent property at 306-3230 Sellic Way. I want to go on record as in favor of this project. I like the looks of it. I know the small lots aren't people's favorite thing, but I think this one is well done. I've seen some of these, all those other work they've done in other subdivisions, and they do take care of the detail. So I hope the neighbors are happy with it. Cheers. Thank you.
Good afternoon, mayor, council, and members of staff. My name is Deborah Wakem, and I'm a resident at 3187 Matilda Drive. I'm here this evening to speak to the rezoning proposal for the 35 residential lots, as I do believe that my interest as a property owner may be affected. And I think I do want to go on record in saying that I am generally in favor of the development, however, I do want to ask for council's consideration and cooperation in the construction of sidewalks in the area before construction is undertaken. We're a family of three. We have a 13-year-old son who climbs that hill every day to go to school at Dunsmere, and he walks it home. So he goes down Seafield Street, and he climbs Heatherbell up to Lagoon. And there are no sidewalks, and we are one of many families in the area who have young children who take that very same route, whether they're going to Dunsmere, whether they're going to Sangster, whether they're taking the hill up to the top to grab a city transit bus. It is a safety concern, and it's a safety concern that I have expressed to council in email, and I'm sure it's been recorded someplace in the past. But with the consideration that construction is going to be happening on that corner, I'm really concerned now as a parent with cement trucks, with dump trucks, with delivery trucks going up and down Heatherbell, probably at somewhat of a rapid pace, and there being no sidewalks for children, I'm concerned about safety. I was concerned even just this past month, when school was still in session, because if you do ever travel Heatherbell Road, you'll notice that there's just, you know, kind of a gravelly side to the paved road that leads up to Lagoon, and the grass is very much overgrown, the bushes are very much overgrown, and even during the school year this year, the kids were having to walk on the side of the road to get to the top. It has been trimmed back, but even still, it's not very safe. There needs to be a distinction between where pedestrians are able to travel on Seafield and on Heatherbell before construction begins. If you are not familiar with the danger that exists there, I beg you, before you go any further, to please go out and take a look for yourself. Now, I am not, I'll wrap up very quickly, I'm not 100% certain of this, but someone did whisper to me and mention that perhaps the sidewalks along Heatherbell were going to be put in once the construction at Ocean Grove was complete. And I'm here to say that if that is in fact true, that is not good enough. We need to have a safe route for our kids to walk to school. Thank you for your consideration.
My name is David Sorenson, and I am the proponent this evening for our proposal. I wanted to just make a brief comment based on page one in the fourth pager that I had left in front of you a little while ago, to the very issue of pedestrian safety, which we have thought through. If you'll notice, on page one, we have itemized in red on the left side that we had wanted to put in a sidewalk, connecting up the existing sidewalk along Heatherbell there, just this side of Portsmouth, and taking it all the way to the property line with Ocean Grove. The idea of doing that first, eminent sense, and we would like to arrange to do that. The other component that is not in here, but was in a document that we presented to you at the time of the land use committee meeting, which was the idea of staggering or phasing, if you will, this development, to have a row on the east side be developed first so we could leave existing Seafield Road in place for use by Ocean Grove and connecting up to Matilda, and then dispensing with the existing road and using new Seafield Road for the second phase. But I realize now that we could actually put in some temporary sidewalks up against the property line with Ocean Grove, so that we could have safe pedestrian access even while construction is going on with existing Seafield Road and new Seafield Road as well. What I'm not sure about is what happens after, if you will, our property, which is the last three houses to the corner with Matilda, and how that is dealt with for issues of pedestrian safety as well. But I'll leave that one to others. But the idea of temporary sidewalks while construction is going on makes eminent sense to us. Thank you.
Any other members of the public? I'm just, I'm getting, hearing motions back there, folks, or, how's the sound? You need a little... Okay, so is there a way to adjust for them out there? Is it, is it my mic or is it the other one for, okay, so...
Is this one working?
So, yeah, so folks, when you're, when you're speaking at the podium, please try to get in the microphone, so that...
Yeah.
Try it!
Not too in. I had some notes, which I sent to Rob, and I didn't keep a copy to bring here, but basically, I guess I should tell you first, I'm Doug McDougall, 288 Portsmouth Drive. I just got a couple of really short points about the development. First, I'm not against the development, but as proposed, I think it's a little too dense for our area. 35 little houses in that raspberry field seems like an awful lot to me, when there's 37 houses only on Portsmouth Drive from Heatherbell all the way to the water. So to me, it's too high density, and I was wondering if any thoughts could be given to maybe go to half or three-quarters that amount of houses and intersperse some green space in between the houses, rather than just have the houses cheek and jowl, like you see on Happy Valley Road. If that's not ugly, I don't know what is. It's really bad, and why would we want to get any of that down there? Secondly, after the density is the problem. I also, in my email, I think I mentioned something about these Wolfners. The Wolfner that he wants to put in is all well and good, except, as it says in their book, it's designed to divert traffic. Well, it's going to divert the traffic up Portsmouth while they're sitting having picnics in their Wolfner. We don't need much more traffic coming up and down Portsmouth Drive as it is. And the last point that I can remember was the usual suspects, fire, flood, earthquake, et cetera. Adding that number of people to the mix of getting up Heatherbell Road, to me, just doesn't make any sense. So like I say, I'm not against the development, I just think if he could space it out a little bit and tone it down a little bit, I think it would be appropriate for the community. As is proposed, I don't think it is. Thank you.
Doug, just so you know, the attachment never came through. That's why I didn't have it.
Right.
Why didn't you have an attachment, the email you sent me?
Oh, I thought you ignored me, just like usual.
Well, not today.
Ronald Ross Under, 211 Portsmouth Drive. I've passed this property for the last 40 years. And always knew that something was going to be built. Couple of things, if we're going to go this dense, maybe we should go a lot denser. They're kind of maybe missing the boat. I think it is a very high density. Couple of things that I was interested, reading the engineering report, and since it's already been discussed and decided at the land, whatever we call it now these days, committee, there's going to be cushions and signage on Heatherbell to slow the traffic down. So it says, "These cushions are at the discretion of the engineer." So anytime in the future, without coming back to council, the engineer can put cushions on Heatherbell, according to what authority you're giving. Since that's going to, one thing is, so are these cushions going to be before or before and after the entrance to Ocean Grove? I think that's what they call it. I'll have to get into the new lingo being away, but anyway, there's a, quote, "A new entrance," proposed there, although I think that entrance was always there. And so is it going to be before that, or after that, or before and after that? Secondly, since the citizens aren't going to pay for this, generally, it's going to be the contractor pays for it, is he going to have to put up the bond now because it may be installed in five years? I don't know. It doesn't say. So that's interesting. The other thing is, is the access to Ocean Grove, which is going to be limited to emergency vehicles, will that be, have a gate on it, or a chain on it, or how is it that you're going to control the traffic in and out of there? Guess nobody wants to answer that, right?
As far as the pedestrian traffic in Heatherbell, I'm wondering if, and this is the rezoning application form, first page, if you look at the roadside of the property, there's a drainage ditch all the way down there that collects the water seeping out of the escarpment above the, well, in the Royal Road property, that releases water that forms all the creeks that flow into Esquimalt Lagoon in that area.
Gus, can you just bring the light down?
Okay, sorry. Is that better? Okay. I'm wondering if, if there's going to be a temporary pathway put down to perhaps Portsmouth. If you could not put like a wooden covering over that ditch, the water will still be able to flow in the ditch, but you could have a safe pathway where the kids and where anybody up the street can walk up without having to conflict with the construction vehicles that'll be turning. Because if you put the sidewalk up the residential side, that's where all the building's going to be, and, you know, every time a truck turns, it stops pedestrian traffic, and it's a hazard to kids. Do you understand what I'm saying, what I mean?
It's a four block sidewalk.
Yeah, if you could do that, and I think that's probably, you can't really pipe that side of the road, the water flowing in, because there's so many sources of water that are running into that ditch, and they eventually end up in Sellic Creek and go into the lagoon. But you could do a temporary thing, I think that probably would not cause too much of a problem, and be much safer in the long run. And I think that, you know, all the developers who are looking to develop in that particular area, the three different proposals, should be able to come together and resurrect that, or at least put it, put in something safe before they start construction. And the other thing is that I'm concerned about, the bigger projects have better water management. This is a very wet area, and this particular piece of property that Mr. Sorenson is going to be building on was partially wetland, and certainly on this side that is now Ocean Grove. It was quite a significant slew there on that side until the first developers, the Quattro, started to put fill into it. So, you know, potentially, any shovel that goes into the ground is going to discover water very quickly, and I think that these developers need to come up with a system that prevents huge amounts of water flowing into the lagoon after stormwater, after rainwater, during the winter fall. So I think that's a significant problem with water management there.
Any other members of the public? Last and final call. Anyone wanting to speak to public at this, or to council at this time? Seeing none, then I will call the public hearing closed at this time, and we will take a few minutes break and then get into council. We need him.
Yeah.
This is from Jamie Chova. Talking about the ambulances.
Oh. Oh, okay, great. Well, I don't recall it ever being discussed in the council, that's why I was so surprised.
Because I've heard that it was a requirement before to have B C ambulance on site. Jamie says, "No, it's never been a requirement." And he hasn't heard back from B C ambulance, or provision of any time or any action.
Now what we're, are we at?
We're still at four to one.
All right. Good, good, good.
But apparently they're playing...
Yeah.
Let that dog die.
You should go and listen to Frank Stanford's commentary from this morning.
It was on that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. That's why, that's why I say maybe we'll just let it die.
Was Frank saying it's a good idea or not?
No, hell no. And...
Who should well understand the process.
I know he enjoys poking the bear, but you're the wrong bear to poke. I said, "I know he enjoys poking the bear, but you're the wrong bear to poke in this game."
Oh, no, he's not poking me. He wasn't poking me at all. Not at all.
Yeah, that's his back on you.
Well, not even really. You know, I mean, it was clear that it came, he meant real clear that it's coming from a net point or whatever. So I really don't have anything in my mayor's message.
Exactly.
I could, I know, I'm waiting for him to come back. Does anybody else have anything for, any announcements for mayor's message? Stay tuned for sewage treatment as it ramps up. Should I say that?
More concrete.
It's working? Good deal.
Thank you, brother.
Everything else is working, but I just deleted it and then brought it up. Did yours work?
Yeah.
You got yours?
My public hearing didn't work, but just do it.
It'll pick back up again?
Did you swipe it with the middle finger?
Yeah, whatever it means, whatever works for you.
All righty, folks. Looking to resume the regular meeting of council for Monday, June the 23rd. I have no changes or additions to the agenda, so looking for approval of the agenda? So moved. All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. For those of you who were not here earlier, Councilor Sullivan is not with us this evening. She had another commitment to Partakian, so we will be working without her presence this evening. Public participation, this is your time, folks. Anything that you might want to have to say, the microphone is there, your name and address, and come to address council.
Your worship, members of council, my name is Jennifer Parley, and I live at 351A Cotlow Road. I'm here to speak in support of the Finance Administration Committee's recommendation to renew its fee-for-service agreement with the Pacific Center Family Services Association. In May of last year, my family's life changed forever, when we learned that our 13-year-old daughter had high anxiety and had been hiding it from us for years. All of a sudden, everything that I thought I knew was different. Our daughter was placed on the waiting list for cognitive behavioral therapy through West Shore Child and Youth Mental Health. However, it was clear that our daughter needed immediate help. She was referred to PCFSA as a temporary measure while on the waiting list. I can't imagine what this past year would have been like without PCFSA. Last fall, it was very difficult for our daughter to manage a whole day at school. When she got home, all she could do was lie down and rest, because she found it very challenging to go to a counseling appointment after school. Her PCFSA counselor made arrangements to meet with our daughter at her school once a week, which continued throughout the school year. During this past spring, our daughter needed to go through further mental health assessments at Queen Alexandra. This was causing such challenges for her that her counselor offered to come with us for follow-up appointment to support our daughter as she went through the process. There were many times this past year that I found myself confused, concerned, and simply at a loss as to what to do, and her counselor would spend time on the phone helping me navigate the challenges facing our family. Our daughter has also benefited from being able to participate in the organization's girls group. This group is set up for teenage girls with anxiety who also have difficulty in social settings. Because she was the victim of a great deal of bullying during her elementary school years, this program became a vital part of our daughter's road to better mental health. With the development of the Royal Bay Lands, Callwood is preparing to invite families to live and be a part of our great community. We are getting a high school and another elementary school. The PCFSA not only services existing Callwood residents such as my family, but will find the need for its services growing with our community. During our last election, I attended the candidates' debate at the Church of the Advent, and what stood out for me was that many of you seemed to embody a balance between good community building and solid financial decision-making. This is an example where the return on your investment will not be monetary, but rather measured in the health and well-being of the community itself. There is no monetary value that can be placed on the experience of hearing my daughter repeatedly say this past spring in her various interviews that she no longer had thoughts of suicide. Thank goodness for the PCFSA. It's one year after everything changed, and our daughter is still on the waiting list for CBT. Throughout this past year, we have watched her grow leaps and bounds, and I credit the programs offered by the PCFSA. I respectfully ask that you accept the recommendation to renew the fee-for-service agreement for this very important organization.
Any other members of our public? Let's see.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you once again for having the opportunity to come and speak to you this evening. I too would like to express my gratitude... I too, um, would like to express my gratitude and appreciation for our community member who has spoken to you tonight and spoken so eloquently about the impact of our program. Uh, I'm here on behalf of Pacific Centre Family Services Association. I'm Mitzi Dean, the executive director, and our offices are based at three four five Whale Road, Colwood. Our organization serves youth and families across the whole of Capital Regional District with a particular focus on West Shore. In particular, as you know, through the funding from this municipality for the Community Outreach Prevention and Education Program for youth in our community. And as you have just been hearing, the youth who we serve through this program would not receive services from any other source. The waitlist at the moment for West Shore Child Youth and Mental Health is over twelve months, and they will only see the top priority of youth. The youth who we serve, as you know, are those living in the community falling between the cracks and who would otherwise not be able to fulfill their potential and contribute in a healthy way to this community in the long-term future. There are a number of different ways we can measure our return on investment. Indeed, the impact that has been described tonight is totally invaluable, and yet we know that that reduces pressures on all the other systems in our community, on the education system, the health system, and other priority youth services. Of course, for individual families, they can't be measured, and you've already heard one story tonight. Yet we can also measure the impact financially for the city council and for our local economy and community. For example, the original concept of this program indeed was to make sure that these youth who need support do not end up in antisocial and delinquent-type behaviors that then cause expensive immediate responses such as from the fire department, bylaws officers, R C M P, et cetera. Not only that, but I have presented a paper to the Finance and Admin Committee outlining the increased revenues that our program has actually brought into the community and how we have enhanced this service. PC F S A has contributed over sixty thousand dollars in the past three years, and we've attracted again over sixty thousand dollars in other grants from other sources of revenues in our region to support this program. Clearly, there's a long-term impact on our health and vitality and economy in West Shore and particularly in Colwood as we engage these youth, not only in recovery from issues and symptoms, but also in building pro-social, healthy attitudes to community and being able to contribute in a positive way in the long-term future. Mayor and council, I commend your leadership. Since the very early nineteen eighties, you have been supporting this program. You have demonstrated leadership in stepping up and looking after the youth in our community. And without those decisions having been made, we would not have been able to deliver this service, meet the needs of these youth, or attract any other funding, for example, from Langford, who also makes the contribution to this program, actually more substantial than the city of Colwood. They have a larger population. Without that, our youth would suffer immeasurably, and so would our community. We've just received another letter from a family that I would like to read and finish, finish on tonight. This has been sent by a family who are residents of Colwood and who also would like to express support for the recommendation of the Finance and Admin Committee. My grandson was taken from his mother at the age of five as his mother was involved in drugs and delinquency, which put the boy in some dangerous and neglectful situations. He then had contact with his father for one year before his father dropped out of the picture, and he has not heard from him for over three years. This poor boy is only ten years old, and he feels that his mother dumped him on my doorstep, and his father must have been killed because he didn't come back after promising him that he would. My grandson was acting out and experiencing great difficulty dealing with his feelings and longing for his parents. He often expressed a sense of worthlessness and a desire not to live at times. Since he has been receiving counselling at PC F S A, he has made progress in finding ways to express himself and understand his feelings in a more positive way instead of the negative and sometimes dangerous ways he was choosing before being accepted into this program. It is next to impossible to express how devastating it would be for both my grandson and I to lose this valuable support. And I feel that he will have great difficulties in his schooling, mainly with his behavior and relationships, and he could regress to a very scary place. In closing, I would just like to plead that this valuable and necessary resource not be made unavailable to very needing children due to cutbacks. Sincerely, a very concerned grandmother guardian. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Any other members of the public for anything at public participation? Somebody's trying to hide behind the podium. Just making sure everybody gets a chance. We're all good? All right, then we'll move on, folks. Um, I don't have anything pressing, uh, mayor's message. My time seems to be consumed these days with C R D and sewage treatment, so not much left on the agenda for much of anything else, so stand by and stay tuned. Um, looking to adopt the minutes of the regular meeting of council, June the ninth. A special meeting of council, June tenth. Public hearing, uh, bylaw minutes for one five three nine and one five three eight of May twenty-sixth. Public hearing bylaw number one five four three, June the tenth minutes.
We've adopted all four sets, your worship.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried, looking for receipt of Heritage Commission minutes of May fourteenth. Finance and Admin Committee, May twenty-first. Planning and Land Use Committee, May sixth. Uh, report of public hearing, May twenty-sixth. Report of public hearing, June tenth. And Protective Services, May fourteenth.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Uh, we have now item four point three point one. Mrs. Glennis Verholt of the Solar Colwood Program. You have a presentation for us.
Just keeping some of the dog.
I can turn more off if you like.
Is it nap time? I'll try to be entertaining. So, um, madam mayor, members of council, staff, and the public, um, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Glennis Verholt and I work for the city's Solar Colwood Program, uh, that is helping people save energy and go solar at home, at work, and on the road. And I'm here today to talk about, um, uh, our monthly reports as well as, um, a, a working document, uh, in preparation for, um, final reporting about what the Solar Colwood Program means for other local governments who are working towards meeting their energy and greenhouse gas reduction targets as well. Um, feel free to interrupt me at any time. So in terms of our project status, we're doing pretty well. Second only to the Sook First Nation, we have achieved more solar hot water retrofits per capita than any other solar program in Canada. You've heard this before. We have over fifteen hundred energy-saving upgrades implemented through the program. Our energy and greenhouse gas savings targets from the original solar hot water, um, uh, goals have been surpassed. We've had over seventy media stories since the program began, including one today, an interview on C facts about the double discounts that are available for Colwood residents with this new, um, utility program that just got announced. We have six awards and special recognitions, uh, from local to international levels. High awareness levels about the Solar Colwood, uh, program in the community. Um, in our door-knocking that we have done, uh, we've, uh, the past three months, well over ninety percent of the people that we visit have heard about the Solar Colwood Program. Um, we have very high satisfaction levels among those, uh, who have, uh, been surveyed, so, uh, well over ninety percent would recommend the Solar Colwood Program to their friends and neighbors. And, uh, they've been very happy with their registered installers as well. So you can check out, uh, the new review section on the website. If you're wondering which installer you'd like to go with when you install your solar hot water system. And, uh, the expansion to the C R D is now in full swing, which we talked about the last time I was presenting to council. Now, these are, as of today, the C R D, uh, the solar C R D program compared to the Colwood program. So of course, we start in twenty-eleven, so we've got a head start. Um, but Sanich is in the lead among the other municipalities, followed closely by Salt Spring and Victoria. So you can see, those are the tracking numbers are the ones that are in progress, and, um, uh, the incentives paid are the ones that have been completed. So it's happening. And, um, in addition to talking about the project status right now, what does this mean for other local governments who are, uh, wanting to learn from the Solar Colwood Program? So, um, as you know, you're not unique. Many, uh, local governments have signed on to, uh, the, the Climate Action Charter, and we have no single proven strategy out there to, um, achieve deep energy and greenhouse gas savings that we need. And Solar Colwood is a learning project in a learning community, so we have something to contribute to the wider conversation. And these are just three of the larger six strategies that we've described in the document, because we have five minutes today. Um, but what the Solar Colwood Delivery Team believes is important, um, that Solar Colwood is doing, um, for informing future local government plans, is we're developing easier processes. So we have a registered installer list, which is an important innovation to get over, um, a barrier about, um, people not being sure they can trust contractors out there, not sure who to go with. Um, we start to make that easier for people. As well, we have point-of-sale rebates, which makes it, um, easier for people because they don't have to come up with all of the money upfront. They, um, uh, don't have to worry about how to qualify for the rebate, when the rebate check will come. It's just all handled through the program right at the point of sale. So those are some really important things that the Solar Colwood Program is doing. Um, also, we're very much focused on personalized support based on building science so that people can make informed decisions about their, uh, upgrades to make the most of their budget. So through solar site visits, energy advisors for homes and businesses, we're connecting people with the information that they need. And we're also, um, doing very robust quality assurance and monitoring. So we are offering solar checkups. Once a solar hot water system has been installed for a good period of time, we do a site visit. We offer that to a hundred percent of the installs, and, uh, so far, they're all working within, uh, expected parameters, which is great. And people are very happy with their solar hot water systems when surveyed, um, down the road. And, um, as you know, the Royal Roads Monitoring Program that you heard from last week or last month has been finding some huge savings. And something that you might be interested in knowing is that with the Solar Colwood Program's forty-four percent energy reduction per home on average, uh, that compares very favorably to previous energy efficiency programs in the province. So the Live Smart B C program, um, and the Eco Energy Program achieved savings of between fifteen to twenty-eight percent per home. So Solar Colwood is doing something very right. Um, so, uh, you have some great things to be proud of. And I'll just leave you with our latest Energy Champion Stories quote. So this is from Greg Sly. You can see his, uh, family's solar panels right there in the background between the trees. So he says, "We have so much hot water in the tank that we can use it to heat the pool, and nothing beats a bath or shower heated without burning fossil fuels. It's like sunbathing in the tub." Thank you very much.
Thanks, Glennis. Go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to, uh, ask Glennis to, um, talk a little bit more about the HERO program that just got announced and what you mean by the double discount.
Thank you. The utilities, B C Hydro and B C Hydro, uh, have quite recently announced a new rebate program. It's available throughout the province, and it covers insulation, air sealing, space and water heating, um, although not solar hot water systems unfortunately. But it does also cover ductless heat pumps. So they're offering eight hundred dollars off ductless heat pumps. And Colwood is offering five hundred dollars off heat pumps. So that adds up to thirteen hundred dollars off the price of a heat pump, where the prices for heat pumps start at four thousand dollars. So that really brings down the price right away. And with the, um, uh, increasing hydro rates, those who are paying for, um, electric baseboard heating would do very well to upgrade to, um, a ductless heat pump right now to shrink their energy use between twenty-five and fifty percent, um, and to get more comfortable heating as well. So it's a really good time for these, um, uh, types of upgrades.
And if my numbers are right, we've got eleven of those incentives left and something like ninety of the solar hot water ones, region-wide?
And if you're interested, you can call Solar Colwood or look it up on the website. We've got all the HERO information up there.
Any other members of council? Comments, questions? Seeing none, thank you very much, Glennis.
And thank you very much.
Moving forward to items number five, correspondence requiring council direction. Five point one, letter from Michelle Gordon, acting corporate and financial officer of the Corporation of Village of Slocan. This is a letter, we're either looking for receipt or staff direction for a letter of support in regards to the need to prevent invasive mussels from entering B C. Is there staff taking that, or we can just go with it, folks? It's pretty clear right there. Um, but there, they, council of the Village of Slocan share and support the concerns regarding the need for action uh, to prevent invasive zebra and, I'm not even going to try that one, Kwaga mussels from entering B C. Village Council supports lobbying the Government of Canada to pass regulations prohibiting transport of invasive mussels into Canadian waters. These species are hard to control and harder to permanently remove. Council further supports the Ministry of Fisheries and Oceans and the Ministry of Public Safety to allocate funds and enable trained and equipped Canadian border agents to inspect boats for invasive water species and prohibit entry until decontamination has been achieved. Counselor Day?
I was just going to move that we send a letter of support.
Any more comment, questions, queries, statements? Seeing none, call the question, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carried, staff? Uh, we have all business in regards to item number six point one. Uh, West Shore Parks and Recreation, extension of three agreements. Co-owners, members, operating, maintenance, and management.
I will excuse myself due to conflict of interest.
We have two members of our council that will be excusing themselves over conflict of interest. They both sit at the West Shore Parks and Rec, uh, Board Table, so it excludes them from participating at the council table.
As a result of the discussion that occurred at the last council meeting, uh, the various CEOs of the member municipalities proposed the issue of extending, uh, the agreements, uh, to be amended to ensure the extension of the terms were suitable and that the continuity of the agreements was not adversely impacted by the premature expiration of the, the agreements. What was amended, uh, since the last time that council reviewed the resolution was the very final part, and so I'll just read. "If the owners cannot agree to a new financial structure within one year of the receipt of an owner's submission, the co-owners, members, and operating and maintenance agreements will expire by eighteen months from the date of the owner's submission unless further extension by mutual agreement." So what this does is, in essence, buy about an additional six months of time, uh, to review and renew those agreements.
Questions from council?
I'll move the recommendation.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried. We can have our two folks return.
What's that? Only four years? Hmm, yeah. I don't even want to talk about it anymore. Because it'll only get extended again.
Item number seven point one, one zoning text amendment application, R Z fourteen five seventy-one, Latoria Road. Um, councillor Lukens?
Thank you, your worship. I did have notes written up, but, um, when I deleted my agenda in order to bring it up, it deleted everything. So excuse me as I go through this, but bottom line is, um, this applicant's requesting a text amendment to the Comprehensive Development Twelve, C D Twelve Zone to include single-family detached residential dwellings as a permitted use. Currently, um, what's, um, zoned there is for them to have townhouses, not, um, single-family use. It doesn't change the density at all, it basically replaces it. At the time of the initial rezoning, the intent was to develop townhouse units on the portion of the site identified as lot four, and that, um, information was included in the planning and land use package. But the developer now wishes to change this to four single- But the developer now wishes to change this to four single-family lots varying in size from 350 to 500 meters squared, and is requesting amendments in the text of the CD12 Zone to facilitate this subdivision. There is a longstanding discrepancy that does exist in terms of allowable density between the current OCP hillside designation and past rezoning of this site. And it was confirmed by the Director of Planning, who is retiring and it was his last meeting, that an automatic designation update will be done as part of the general 2014 OCP review that is currently underway. And this is to ensure that the designation on all properties located south of Latoya Road between Veterans Memorial Parkway and Wishart Road is brought into consistency with the zoning already in place. It was also explained that an additional amendment should be added to the list of required amendments in the report, being the establishment of a minimum flanking side yard of three meters for principal buildings on any lots that abut roads on more than one side. It was noted that one of the proposed single-family lots on the site in question will be a corner lot of Byzantine Way at the front and a future access road along the side. There are no registered encumbrances against this title which would deter the proposed amendment. The developers did speak, they did say that they are requesting the text amendment because they wish to create a more unified look to the development along Byzantine Way, so as you entered, if you happen to take a look at the map. There is no change, as I mentioned, in the density in terms of the number of units because the four single-family lots proposer intended to replace the five townhouse units in the original plan. The one thing that was requested is that the report be changed to require that the front yard setbacks be increased from 4.5 meters to 6 meters for garages. The importance of this is to ensure that we do not have cars that are parked in the driveways with their butts hanging out onto the sidewalks and the roads. And so we want to make sure that, you know, that these have long enough driveways in order to ensure that the cars are parked on the driveways and not in the roadways. So, the recommendation is, and I so move, that an appropriate zoning text amendment by law be prepared for the purpose of permitting single-family residential use in the Comprehensive Development 12, CD12 Zone, provided that no more than four dwelling units shall be detached units on one family lots. And the Development Agreement covenant currently registered on title must be amended to include reference to single-family subdivision and detached dwelling units prior to adoption of a zoning amendment by law." Thank you.
Comments, question from council? Counselor Day?
Thank you. Sorry, I'm playing catch-up in a way, I'm busy. Are you, is this proposing that there will be several homes on each lot?
No, there's five lots at the front, and what they're going to do is scale it down to so that there's only four single families and not five townhomes, is that we're going to all be connected. So it gives you some sightlines. So it breaks it up as you come in. It's not proposed that these SFDs would move, single-family dwellings would move into the developments, it's only at the front end that this amendment addresses. The entrance.
Anyone else? Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed?
Front-end, back-end, you know what I mean.
Motion carried. Protective Services, item number 7.2.1, recommendation by animal, around animal control bylaw review. Counselor Logan?
Thank you, Worship. At our last Protective Services Committee, the senior municipal enforcement officer gave an overview of the proposed animal control bylaw amendments. Basically, it is full of, it's housekeeping that incorporates some things that the council has approved over the past year, such as backyard hens and the requirements to keep hens on residential properties, a schedule that allows ticketing for dangerous dogs, that sort of thing, as well as acting on a request that the West Shore Parks and Recreation had, which was to help them with dogs that are off-leash on their grounds. So under this proposed bylaw, the West Shore Parks and Properties will now be an on-leash area, and the CRD animal control has been consulted, and this will not affect their fee in any way that they charge to the city. So again, it's just incorporating some of the changes that we've enacted or requested over the past year, and just tidies up a few other wording issues that were in the current bylaw. So it was recommended by committee, and I so move that council support the recommendations in the senior bylaw officer's May 7, 2014 report, and proposed bylaws 1531 and 1532 as presented for enactment.
Second.
Questions, Counselor Martin?
Page four, or actually, it's number five, Section 5, impound and maintenance of animals. Section, so basically, pound keeper, animal control officer may seize and impound, be an unlicensed dog. My only concern about that wording is, I know if a bylaw, or excuse me, if an animal control person found an unlicensed dog with the owner, I would hope that they would sell them the license first. But my concern is that we're empowering the pound keeper to not make that the first option, that they have the ability to impound that dog if they want to.
Keep your dog on leash and license it.
Doesn't need to be on leash. I'm very clear, they don't need to have leashes.
Yeah, I'll just respond, that actually wasn't a change, that's in the current bylaw. But you're right, because I got caught with the new puppy, I might add. And that certainly was something that was more educational, and I managed to get a free license off of him, so you're exactly right. They don't want to impound animals.
Right, and I guess that's just, and I'm just wondering, like, at Protective Services, was there any discussion around saying, instead of just giving the pound keeper the ability to impound the dog without offering to purchase a license first, if that was ever considered changing that? Just because, I'm not saying that they shouldn't have that power to empower, I just don't want to have some crazy pound keeper impounding a dog if the person doesn't have a license.
No, that wasn't an issue, and simply because the wording is "may", so it's the expectation that there'd be some discretion amongst the officer.
And I know of a-
Quite well taken.
I know a couple of instances where dogs have not had licenses, and they have sold them on the spot. They didn't gip-
That's what I wanted them to do.
They didn't gip taxpayers out of money by giving them a free one.
Those that pick up after their months, too.
Any further conversation? Seeing none, call the question, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Finance and Admin, item number 7.3.1, recommendation regarding Pacific Center Family Services Association. Counselor Martin?
Thank you. I don't think I have much more to add than what our two speakers shared with council this evening. I think they did an excellent job of that. Just a couple housekeeping notes, if you were to look just below the recommendation. It's important to understand our five-year agreement ends June 2, 2015. And so this is a housekeeping, again, contract thing, so that they have some assurances that the contract will continue. So we're actually being very proactive by addressing this a year before it actually expires. And the actual dollar amount, the reason there isn't an actual dollar amount was that in the fall, once in principle we've agreed that we will continue funding PCFSA, there would be a discussion with finance and with staff to bring to council exactly the amount that they would be requesting. So, the Finance and Administration Committee recommends, and I will move, that the Fee for Service Agreement between the City of Callwood and Pacific Center Family Services Association to supply a community outreach, prevention, and education program within Callwood remain in place and be renewed for another five-year term starting June 2, 2015.
Second.
Any further conversation from council? Counselor Lukens?
I just want to say thank you to the public that spoke. I can only imagine how difficult it is to get those types of services, and glad that we're able to support it. I think they are a worthy entity within our community, and I'm glad they are in our community because it is close and it's accessible. And I'm grateful that we've had success, and you've been able to speak about it and share it with us tonight, so thank you for sharing your story.
Counselor Day?
Thank you. I just wanted, I know she's already gone home, but I wanted to thank Mitzi Dean, Executive Director, for her very thorough report that she did for us outlining what some of the costs are, because it's always easy to say, you know, these benefits are immeasurable. But she came up with some excellent statistical information on what some of the cost benefits are. So I just wanted to pass my appreciation along to Mitzi.
Anyone else? And thank you. With that, call the question, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carried? Second item, under Finance and Admin, recommendations regarding St. John's Church proposed additional lighting. Counselor Martin or Counselor Day? Thank you.
Thank you. At the Heritage Commission, we discussed issues related to the lighting for not just St. John the Baptist Heritage Church, but also the Emery Family Hall. And so, in the evenings, it's very dark, especially when we have brownies and girl guides using the facilities. And we got a quote for improving the lighting there, the cost to install proper lighting to the City of Callwood standard style with cyclone poles with the LED light sources, which will reduce the maintenance cost over time without having to replace the lights, for a total cost of $10,935, including three poles. And the recommendation was, and I would so move, that it be that Emery Electric supply and install two City of Callwood-style cyclone poles in dark green with fixtures of an LED light source located in place of the existing pole on the corner adjacent to the gate, and in place of the existing pole at the entrance to the churchyard, and a third pole to replace an existing pole adjacent to the driveway, for a total cost of $10,935 plus GST. And the council be provided with the cost for the civil excavation works and cast-in-place or pre-cast concrete works prior to approval, or be advised if the work will be done by volunteers or the City of Callwood.
Second.
Counselor Lukens and then Martin?
Thank you. I just want to add that regarding the pre-cast concrete and preparation work that needs to be done, I've been able to get that donated from a wonderful developer in our community. Jeff doesn't know about it yet, but I'm sure that's why he's here tonight, just kidding. Seeing if you're paying attention. Anyways, so it should be of no cost to the city with respect to that. We don't have a costing yet, we'll wait to get the specs from Emery Electric as to exactly what's needed. But any cost in framing up that pore that has to happen, and then the concrete will be covered by this person, so thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Martin?
Thank you. I kind of wish this report had a financial implication statement, just because I'm not sure where this money's coming from. I would like to just be clear on where that's, well, I know it's coming from St. John's, but is it money that's already been allocated, or that's hence the reason I'm asking? And the second question is, did we go to an RFP for the work?
So Madam Merrick can answer one half of the question?
Okay, Counselor Day, and then, and Finance has something to add, perhaps?
Just on the RFP part, no, we did not go to an RFP. There's been numerous electrical and other upgrades provided free of charge to the city in developing the site and saving the church, and in fact rebuilding Emery Hall. And so Emery Electric was approached to do the work, as they've done so many items for free for the city, that we felt that they, A, would do a good job, and B, would give us a competitive price.
Anything from Finance to answer, Counselor Martin? Need any more?
Yeah, I'd still like to know where the money's coming from.
Yes, if we could maybe amend this motion to specify where the funds are coming from. If it's supposed to be the St. John Reserve, then we should include that in the motion. And in terms of RFP, we're not required under our current purchasing policy to go to RFP, but we are required for $10,000 purchase to have quotations.
So in terms of amending the motion, I'd be happy to amend the motion to say that the money would come from the St. John Heritage Church funds?
Seconder on that?
Sorry, if we have a policy in place that says that we do need to get quotes, anything over $10,000, I understand that Emery has been wonderful to us, and especially regarding this, but I think it's important that we stay within our policies.
And I would concur, so how would, how about we table this motion to the next council meeting? That's, I think, the best motion, and then we'll get some other quotes to go in there.
Motion to table? All in favor? Opposed, motion carried? Third item in Finance and Admin, report CAO in regards to City Hall workplace configuration.
As a strategic priority of council, it was proposed that a service capacity review be undertaken. The intent would be to ensure that the organization of staff, the level of staffing, and the skills of staff best meet the city's needs in light of the work to be accomplished now and into the future. Significant part of the service capacity review is how staff are organized, and should also be examined to ensure the organization has sufficient available workspaces while enabling staff to work together smoothly and efficiently as a team. In the interim, staff have been reviewing possible office layouts. However, there has been some disagreement as to where staff should be placed. Displacement can be extremely disruptive to the workplace and day-to-day activities, and is extremely important to understand the workplace flow and create the right plan on the first attempt. Coupled with the immediate requirement to accommodate the current and future staff, it is administration's intention to make use of a contractor. The involvement of a contractor will provide the organization with expert advice on the review and planning elements of the workplace configuration to ensure it is delivered in a cost-effective manner. The use of the existing funds that have been approved for the service capacity review will be redirected to this project, thus having no financial impact on the current budget. However, additional funds may be required in 2015 to complete the remainder of the service review. Recommendation to council is that council agreed to have the CAO engage the services of an architectural firm with the scope of reviewing and making recommendations for reconfiguring the existing layout of City Hall to improve the efficiency of the building and enable more cost-effective ways of working collaboratively while enhancing the customer experience, and that the funding be reallocated from the $25,000 budget for the service capacity review.
I'll move the recommendation.
Second.
Counsel's conversation, Counsel Cullington?
Thank you. Great idea. We absolutely needed to get the kind of the right configuration, and I know we've got lots of weird things happening back there at the moment, so it would be nice to see it well laid out. Couple of questions for you. As part of this, will you also look at, not that I'm necessarily thinking we're going to be expanding staff, but, you know, let's say we end up with a couple more staff, are we going to end up with something that would allow that to happen if it did?
It will. And as well, we are going to be looking at the front foyer and that first image, that first impression that the public have when they come in, to open up the front, to make it more inviting to the customer, to make the workflow process work better for the customer, and hopefully expand some of our workspaces into that front foyer while accommodating all of this as well. But of course, looking into the future and to be able to expand staffing needs if required will be a part of this. I have engaged the contractor that the previous CAO, Chris Pease, was in touch with late last year. They are still able to work on this, and they can start immediately.
And secondly, I think you said earlier in the report there was an upset price of $9,500?
At most.
We probably need to put that into the recommendation, because otherwise it reads that it's sort of you've got up to $25,000, isn't it?
The remainder of the $25,000 will be actually into completing those recommendations at the front end and for office spaces. We will be utilizing existing office furniture to the best that we can, but there may be other requirements, dividers, maybe even some temporary walls being built as well, so.
So the, just so I'm understanding properly, the $25,000 budget covers the consultant's fees plus actually doing that work?
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Day?
Thank you. Just wanted to mention and hopefully have confirmed that this would take into account our annual contractual type work, like including the auditors. Quite often, when the auditors come, there's a real musical chairs is going on for them to be set up, and I'm just wondering if that's being worked into the plan?
It is now.
Counselor Lukens?
Thank you. Well, I'm not opposed to this. I know when I was elected in 2011, there has been talk about what the longevity and life expectancy is of this building and how long we're going to be here. And so, I want to be cognizant. Yes, we absolutely need to accommodate staff, and we need to have the teams together. I get that, and I understand the benefits. But I think we need to look to the bigger picture and understand, what is the plan going forward, and how are we going to get there? Because I know there's limitations within this building as well. So, I will support this. However, I think it needs to go a step further, and we need to start to build it out.
Staff are cognizant of those future demands. There may be other opportunities to present themselves to council, hopefully in the next six to 12 months. And it would be more of a medium-term solution, next five years perhaps, but this is an interim solution to get us through the next several years. We want to minimize our costs, understanding that if this is not a permanent location or other renovations need to be completed here, we're cognizant of that. So, we want to do this at the lowest cost possible.
Anybody else? Called question then, all popes? Go ahead.
So, sorry, are we... I'm just trying to understand. Are we going to... It mentions an architectural firm. Do we know who that firm is yet, or are we going to like... What are we doing bid-wise again, or are we getting quotes? What are we doing that way?
The company was Chao Lo.
Chao Lo? Chao Lo?
Chao Lo.
Is that in here? Did I miss it?
No, it was not included. At the time of writing the report, I wasn't able to make contact with the principal of the company to see if they were even capable of undertaking this task at the time.
Okay. So, like, is that the only firm that does this type of thing in Victoria, or like... Again, I'm just trying to look... Same with the last thing that we talked about, is just making sure that we're getting, you know, best return on our dollar?
There is an urgency to meet the needs of current staffing needs within the office to accommodate those staff members. Displacement of staff can be very disruptive, as I indicated earlier. We have staff that are being separated from their departments, and so it's very ineffective and very inefficient. I like to make those moves once rather than repeatedly. Nobody really likes to be moved in the workplace when they have their own office set up. So, I think there's an urgency to move with this. There are some others, but that process would drag it out probably another month or two. We can definitely work on these numbers and lower the impact to the city. Perhaps there's some in-house work that staff can do in preparing some of the layouts, et cetera, for the consultants.
Okay.
Anything? Nope? No follow-up? Anybody else? Called question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Moving into bylaws, bylaw number 1537 for third reading only. Callwood Land Use Bylaw, number 151, 1989, Amendment 137, northeast corner of Seafeld and Heather Bell Roads. Move third.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Bylaw number 1545, first and second readings only. Callwood Land Use Bylaw, number 151, 1989. Amendment number 140, CD12 Zone Text Amendments for 571 Latoya Road.
Move introduction?
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Move second.
Second.
Conversation, discussion? Seeing none, called question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Bylaw number 1540, final reading, West Shore Parks and Rec Center Fees and Charges. Do we need to excuse?
Ask.
This is West Shore Parks and Recreation Center Fees and Charges, bylaw number 1540, for final reading. Move final.
Second.
Alls in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Want to grab those two folks back? Item number 8.4, bylaw number 1531, first, second, and third readings on animal control, bylaw number 1531, 2014.
Move introduction?
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Move second.
Second.
All those in favor? Pardon? Conversation on animal control bylaw?
He doesn't even know.
You have...
He just didn't say discussion.
That's what I'm saying. You don't have... Do you?
I don't.
Okay. Well, there you go. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Looking for third?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? 8.5, bylaw number 1532, first, second, and third readings, municipal ticket information bylaw number 1314, amendment number three, bylaw number 1532, 2014.
Move introduction?
Second.
All those in favor?
Give it to Rob.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries?
Second. First, second. Sorry, what, second?
He's going to move second.
Move second?
Second, second.
Move second, second.
Rookie.
Conversation, discussion? Seeing nothing, called question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries?
Move third.
Second, third?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? You guys are painful. 8.6, bylaw number 1544, first, second, and third readings on Callwood Main Sewer Local Area Service Bylaw, Establishment and Loan Authorization, bylaw number 598, 2001. Amendment number 23, LAS Enlargement, 527 Mountview Avenue, bylaw number 1544, 2014. First, second, and third?
Move introduction? Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Move second?
Second, second.
Conversation, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed?
Move third?
Carried?
Second, third.
Good job, Rob. All those... I know. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Bylaw number 1546, first, second, and third, Election and Voting Procedure Bylaw.
I don't know.
Bylaw number 1546. Second introduction, please? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Move second.
Second.
Discussion?
It really disturbs me that the provincial government is making these changes so late in the game and expecting us to be able to get our bylaws approved and have to be done in August. It's absolutely ludicrous. They should hold themselves to such high accountability.
You're here.
Very disappointed.
Yeah.
He'll second that.
Counselor Day?
Yeah, there are significant changes in terms of what people who run for office will have to do. There's a few benefits. Some, there will be some electronic forms, but yeah, it certainly is going to be really critical for anyone who is running to be elected in the next municipal election to really look carefully, because it won't be the same as other years.
Anybody else? Staff?
Before we move to third reading of the bylaw as well, I just want counsel to be aware that they are allowed to do things such as impose fees for nomination documents, which for the first time, we can provide electronically. We've always provided them in paper. It is a lot of paper, but municipalities do different things. Some of them do charge for them, some of them don't charge for them because they don't want cost to be a barrier to people having a look at the people who are running for election. It doesn't have to be included in the election bylaw, which has to be adopted and in place by August 4th, which is why there was a rush to get it through to this meeting and the July 14th meeting. But it could be in the miscellaneous fees and charges bylaw if council wants to have a fee. The other thing that council should be aware of is the... No, I lost my place here. Providing the nomination documents online is a first. We haven't been allowed to do that yet. We are doing it by bylaw, which is required. The new local elections legislation will allow all the, what they now call candidate financing disclosure statements, to be available online, but it's all through Elections BC. So, all of the forms that are turned in by candidates in 2014 will all have to be vetted through Elections BC. They do all the follow-up, and they provide us with access, and then we can provide the public with access. So, we can charge a fee for it if people want it in paper, and again, that's a decision that council should make. Another decision that council can make is if they want to have more than two people, two qualified nominators nominate candidates. The legislation only requires two. You can require more, which is what we don't recommend. We think we should just stick with the minimum two. And you can also charge a nomination deposit if you want to, which is reimbursed to anybody who isn't declared a candidate. But we don't recommend taking that approach either, because we don't want cost to, again, become a barrier for some people. So, I just thought you should be aware of those facts.
I had a hard time getting two people to sign that.
No wonder. All of you are the jokes.
I thought she bought me beer.
Any other comments or questions, counsel? Seeing none, called question, that's second. Alls in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? I need third?
Third.
Second.
Alls in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Final bylaw this evening is bylaw number 1543, final reading. Callwood Official Community Plan, bylaw number 999-2008, amendment number six, Royal Bay Area Plan, bylaw number 1543. And I will start by saying, if council does have any comments they want to make in regards to this one, because we didn't make those comments at the last one, it is very appropriate for you to do that at this time. So, I'll open that up if there's anything anybody wants to say. Counselor Lukens?
Thank you. And I did speak to a number of residents at the meeting afterwards. I don't have anything to say with respect to the OCP amendment that has... that we're actually discussing, you know. So, I don't think there were any concerns, but I just want people to acknowledge that we do hear them with respect to what their concerns are regarding dust, lack of communication, the website, those sorts of things. So, I look forward to Mr. Hugh executing on the discussion we had with Scott. No pressure.
Counselor Day?
Thank you. And I wanted to explain why I will not be voting in favor of the Official Community Plan Amendment. There are a couple of concerns that I did address at the committee at the whole meeting. One is to do with the transit access at Painter Road, which would necessitate taking down a fairly substantial stand of trees in order to accomplish that. And I believe it would create conflicts between a pedestrian cycling path and transit, and it is referenced in the Official Community Plan under, I believe it's map 54, if memory serves me correctly, but it specifically mentions that as a potential transit entrance, and I have a concern with that. I also have a concern for any potential through road at that point for the same reasons. And the other concern that I have is with regard to the four-shore park areas and the substantial steep slopes and the amount of erosion that has been taking place there. It was a major concern when we first did the master development agreement, was brought forward by a number of residents, which is why the four-shore monitoring program was supposed to be instituted, which was not followed up on. I realize we have a different developer, but I feel very concerned, and I hope that many of my concerns may be mitigated at the rezoning phase, but I just don't feel confident enough to vote in favor of this at this time.
Counselor Cullington?
Thank you, Madam Merrick. Some of the comments I probably would have made at the public meeting, one obviously to thank the number of people who came out and commented, and also to thank staff. There were a huge number of changes that happened between our first meeting and this one. I know you guys worked really hard with the Royal Bay team, and that was very much appreciated. I think overall, a sense that the community and council are very excited by this development. I think it's huge. It's a significant change. I'm really looking forward to seeing it moving forward. Having said that, just that note of caution that we did also hear loud and clear from the public, there were a lot of comments about sort of feeling like you weren't quite a good neighbor yet, that they really do want to hear from you and know that their concerns, things like dust, are being listened to, like Counselor Lukens, very much looking forward to that kind of communications piece, getting in place and really just being, feeling like a good conversation between the development and the community, because the community is supportive, but they just want to know what's going on and to feel like they're in the loop. And in terms of sort of some of those kind of many pieces that we know are coming next, as was said on that evening, it was just the first of many decisions that will happen, you know, a sense that absolutely we support this development, but we are looking for the very highest standards out of you, and we know you'll deliver. Thank you.
Anyone? Counselor Logan?
Thank you, Your Worship. I will say, this is a massive step forward, and I was around when we went through the former rezoning process. And I like how this plan has updated, has been updated, and really grown into itself. And the sooner it gets underway, the better. And the real proof in the pudding will be the rezoning process, and that's where the... that's where we get into the weeds and start looking at that detail. You know, I hear the residents' concerns on Painter. The one thing that I won't support is giving up any kind of right-of-way. And there's many times in the past when the city has said, "If only we had the right-of-way." Or, you know, Michael can attest to, I'm sure, when we were planning on running the sewer up Triangle Mountain and the challenges that we had with trying to obtain right-of-way and negotiate, it was a pain in the rear. So, if we maintain that, I think it's an important step forward. I don't know what Painter Road in that neighborhood's going to look like in 10, 15, 25 years. Chances are, it's going to look very different. And hamstringing that part of the city, I think, would be irresponsible if we didn't maintain that type of right-of-way, whatever the use is going to be. So, I'm really looking forward to moving forward on this and looking at what Jeff has to present to us in terms of communications plan. Again, no pressure, eh, Jeff? Sherry told me to say that.
Anyone else? Seeing none, called question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion does carry? Looking to move in camera? Are we needing something?
Was that just third reading that we did?
Yep.
Was that third or final?
No, that was final.
Oh, it's final, I'm sorry.
Final. Motion to move in camera?
Second.
Alls in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Thanks, folks.
Hey, Robby.
No, I do know him.
I was going to say, yes, you do.
Yeah, I do know. And I think he's running for line for council in selection.
Yeah.
Does he?
He'd more accounting.
He told me that.
I wonder who he's going to be?
Uh-huh. How are you?
Good, thanks. I need you guys.
Thank you, ladies. Next month, you know.
I'll make a note. Overdrive.
Yep, we're on it.
Yeah. You know, he needs to leave her and go on his feet. My project is here.
Whatever.
[inaudible].
I wonder who it's going to be. How are you?
Uber try.
...